You still have, it hasn't hit five, but as soon as it does, I'm gonna start doing the. Boilerplate.
And President Rowan, Phil, you don't need, that's all, that's all on the board of the plate. You don't need me to speak actually, right?
No, you're all good.
You're good. Although we always love to hear from you. Okay, pursuant to recently adopted amendments to the Illinois Open Meetings Act included in Public Act one oh one dash zero six four zero, public bodies may, in certain circumstances, hold entirely virtual public meetings without a quorum physically present in any one location. Governor Pritzker's executive order twenty twenty two dash oh one has extended this provision through February sixth, twenty twenty two. Given the state of the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic as village precedent, I've made the determination that it's not practical nor prudent to meet in person at this time. Accordingly, this meeting of the committee of the hall is being conducted virtually with members of the board and staff participating through the Zoom webinar platform. Village manager Corrali is in the village hall council chambers in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. As the first item on the agenda of this committee of the whole, I'll request a roll call.
All right, trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee listener.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Onderdunk.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
There.
Trustee Bree.
Here.
And President Rowan.
Here. As noted today, the meeting is being conducted as a virtual meeting via Zoom webinar software and is being audio recorded and simulcast on the village's Facebook page. A quorum of members of the board are present via remote access. As required by law, I'll ask for a roll call rather than voice votes on any agenda item requiring a vote. Second item on the agenda is public comment. In accordance with the supplemental rule, the board approved on April sixteenth, twenty twenty. Here's how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with the meeting agenda. At this time, I'll ask Jordan Rikowski to read the public comments received and non-agenda items that were submitted prior to the meeting. Public comments on agenda items, if any, will be read when we reach the items on the agenda. I would also note that the board has received several dozen public comments regarding backyard chickens, which are going to be discussed later in the agenda. We've read them. We appreciate residents taking the time to share these comments and the staff has posted all these comments on the village website. Jordan, do we have anything not including chickens that was sent in?
So President Rowan, we do have an additional one for chickens. However, we do have a couple of comments if we make it to street lighting this evening. No, no other comments.
Okay. If a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during the meeting, please email your comments to glencoe meeting at village of glencoe.org. Comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting and written comments should be limited to four hundred words. The third item on the agenda is a presentation and discussion of historic preservation of the Historic Preservation Commission recommendations regarding historic preservation of Glencoe. And I ask that the Chair of our Historic Preservation Commission, Peter Van Bechtin, and Assistant to the Village Manager, Jordan Rikowski, present.
Thank you, President Rowan. If you just give me one moment, I am bringing all of our commissioners to panelists. And Peter, we can see your screen. It's giving you one second. Erica and Diane, I see you. I'm gonna bring you over one second. All right, President Rowan, I believe we're all here. Peter, can, are you able to to share your your audio as well? Peter, you are muted.
Well, he's unmuting. Let me say thank you to everybody on the commission for the hard work that went into the presentation that they're gonna make and the recommendations that were submitted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. On behalf of the entire commission, thank you for the opportunity to meet this evening and have a discussion with you. We have about a twelveish minute presentation to set up the discussions this evening. And I'd like to start with a question, the same one that we started with last time. And that's what do you value about Glencoe? If you value something, whether it's an heirloom or a house, you take steps to save it. So let's keep that in mind as we have our discussion tonight. Last time we were with you back on September twenty third, we talked about the current state of preservation in the village and we discussed the continued loss of honorary landmarks and historically significant homes. Tonight, we'll be discussing the Preservation Commission's recommendations. As an overview, the village has two levels of landmark ordinance designations. There are eleven certified landmarks in the village. And some of the highlights of that category is that you have an option to apply to the state for a property tax freeze. There's a mandatory review of proposed modifications. And demolition permit requests can be denied through the Certificate of Appropriateness process. The other category is honorary, which there are eighty four properties in the village. That one, there is an optional advisory review of proposed renovations, additions, and demolitions. And there's a one hundred and eighty day delay for demolition permit issuance. And in all rough cases, the issuance of that permit really cannot be stopped. There is a third category that we refer to as significant historical properties. And those are properties that would meet the criteria to become landmarks, but for whatever reason have not done so. There are about two hundred and twenty four of those. So all told, in the village, there are about three hundred and ten total residential landmarks and significant properties are roughly ten percent of the total. A summary of the observations from our first discussion, about ten percent of the homes have historic significance. Glencoe has the second fewest certified landmarks on the North Shore, both by quantity and percentage. Over the last twenty years, Glencoe has had the highest percentage of new homes on the North Shore. Since nineteen ninety, twenty-five percent of the total housing stock has been demolished and replaced. And since two thousand nineteen honorary landmarks have been demolished and replaced, or on average, one a year. And in that same time period, about sixty-eight significant architectural houses have been demolished. And finally, the rate of demolition of significant landmark houses appears to be increasing. So over the last couple of years, the commission has taken a pretty hard look at the ordinances and procedures on our neighboring communities that you can see. And of note, Kennelworth and Glencoe are the only two non-home rule communities. Our goal was to learn about what they do, about their laws and procedures in order to produce recommendations to you regarding landmark demolitions and to reduce those through incentives for preservation and disincentives for demolition. So we put together for this evening a series of recommendations. We have eight honorary landmark ordinance modifications, five policy and process modifications, and seven additional recommendations for further discussion. So beginning with the ordinance modification recommendations, currently, and these are all at the honorary landmark ordinance level, that's second layer. Currently, the ordinance allows a advisory meeting to be optional and to have optional attendance. And where that becomes an interesting issue is that what our experience has shown is that when an owner has a modification to their house, such as an addition or a restoration, they are eager to meet with us and have a dialogue. But when the building is, has filed for demolition permit, they hardly ever come along. I can think of only one instance. So the first one is to change the current public advisory review meeting to be a public hearing and require attendance by the owner or owner's legal representative. The second one pairs with that so that meeting notification requirements would be consistent with the certified ordinance requirements. And we'd like to see additional notices such as yard sites and mailings to residents, particularly for demolition or applications. Now, the third one might seem a little funny, but the certified ordinance, certified landmarks have a very prescriptive set of submission requirements. Whereas the honorary ordinance is very general, it just says submit plans. So we'd like to suggest that specify the submission requirements to include the house history, an architect's statement of intent, the existing and proposed drawings, existing photographs, and three D representations. And there's a lot of precedent for that, all up and down the North Shore. And in fact, the ordinance requires the commission to review the submission. And without those kinds of documents, it's very difficult to do so. Number four is to, in order to create a public historic record, to specify submission requirements for demolition applications to include measured plans, elevation drawings, photographs, and a site plan. So in the future, historians can learn from what this house was. The precedent precedents for that are Kennelworth and Lake Forest to a degree. We're recommending that you extend the demolition permit issuance delay from one hundred and eighty to two hundred and seventy days. Currently, the ordinance calls for one hundred and eighty. Now, by reference, the booth cottage process took about two hundred and thirty days. Interestingly, in the recent history, Winnetka extended theirs from one hundred and eighty to two hundred and seventy days. But it is more like actually about three hundred, three hundred plus when they factor in all of the other processes that they do. Kennelworth has one year for buildings of special importance. Highland Park has a two-level delay depending on how many criteria of the structure met and when they landmarked it. Number six would be to change the start of the demolition permit issuance delay from the current date of application to start at the date of the public hearing. This would incentivize attendance at the meeting that we talked about on item number one. Number seven, establish a procedure for a third-party review of the demolition applications to identify feasible alternatives to demolition, if any, including structural analyses as appropriate. In order to pay for that, establish a permit fee escrow to paid consultants. The precedent for that again is Kennelworth and Lake Forest. Number eight, establish additional zoning bonuses for landmark properties to encourage additions and renovations in lieu of demolitions. For example, allow for a one-time thirty percent gross floor area bonus above the maximum allowed in zoning. The current zoning allows for a variance of a fifteen percent increase. So this would be double what the code currently calls for, but it would only be for landmarks. Okay, the policy and process recommendations. Number one, expedite, in other words, go to the front of the line, building permit submissions for their review for landmark renovations and additions. Sometimes there's kind of a waiting period for building for permit reviews, and this would expedite theirs and recognize that they're a little special. Number two, enlarge the Preservation Commission from five to seven commissioners. And there, the idea is to bring, would allow us to bring on more expertise, additional expertise, and help ensure a quorum. Number three, change the name of the commission from the Historic Preservation Commission to the Preservation Commission. There's a lot of confusion in the community between what this body does and the Glencoe Historical Society because of similarities of name. Also, by removing the name historic, it removes people's perceptions of what is historic, because many people have a pre-, pre-urbranded idea of what that means. Number four, simplify the commissioners' term lengths to all be five years and eliminate the vice chair position. Since I've been on the commission since two thousand eight, everyone has served five years of terms and we've never had a vice chair. And so this is just simplifying what is already the process. Number five, finally, update demolition application photography requirements to be color and four by six minimum size. Now, the last time we were together, a really good question came up. How does landmarking a property affect its value? And at that time, we said, that's a tough question because frankly, there is no clean, simple answer. It depends, and it's very complicated. You can find examples on both sides of that discussion. Value is not determined by real estate brokers or other experts, but in fact, it's determined by action, the actions of buyers and sellers in the marketplace. And the best court I saw while looking at this issue was as long as you live in a community that's desirable, a historic house will have value. But there may be a smaller pool of prospective buyers. Okay, we have some recommendations for further discussion. But I would like to suggest we hold those until the end of our allotted time this evening in order to maximize the time we have for discussion of what we've discussed. So if that's okay, I'd like to turn it back over and suggest that we start a discussion of some of the recommendations that we've put forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for a clear, pithy, excellent presentation. That doesn't make these issues simple, but they were presented in as clear and simple a way as they could be. So Jordan, is there anything you wanted to say before we let the trustees have at it?
Well, I just wanted to commend Peter and the commission for their hard work. President Rowan, as you said, Peter did a fantastic job. I'll just say if the commission, you know, has any questions or if the trustees do as well, I'm happy to step in, but I'll let you discuss.
Oh, I think we should just open this up to to trustees. I, you know, I was on the village board a long time ago when the village first did a preservation ordinance. And the sort of the question, the big question is, okay, are you gonna tell people they can't demolish a house? And ultimately, we decided not unless they volunteered to be subject to that. And we've been sort of, you know, trying to figure out how that works ever since. And as the presentation showed, under our current regime, there's a lot of stuff getting demolished. And so the real question is, what, if anything, do we want to do about that? And I, you know. So let's, what's everybody think?
If I could, I'd like to throw a question out. Given the number of homes, both of landmark, which presumably is not requested by the owner, I assume it's simply, I don't want to use the word imposed, but I'm not sure what the word is, but it's not something, you can go in and request to be certified. I don't know if you can go in and request to be landmarked. And that in most cases, landmarking is something that the owner finds out about. They don't voluntarily request. Why is it that you think so many homes were not saved? You know, something wasn't done with them to preserve them during that period, that twenty-year period you referenced? And how many, other than the one, the most recent one, pardon me, the Frank Lloyd Wright? No, the Booth House, yeah. Other than the one that got put onto the Park District property recently. Are there any other examples of, you know, homeowners that chose to do something with their home that we know about, and we can look to those as examples and figure out what motivated them? And therefore, what we should do to help motivate others? Sorry, I'll shut up.
Let me try to unpack that a little bit. It's been our experience, at least mine, since two thousand eight that the cases where landmarking was imposed on a property are extraordinarily rare. I can think of only one. In all, almost all cases, when a property is landmarked, it is done with owner. It's propelled by the owner, it's brought forward by the owner. And there was one case, not too distant past, where it was brought forward by the commission. In all cases, for both certified and honorary, it goes to your board for approval. And I can think of zero cases where there was someone who did not want to be a landmark, where in fact, the property was landmarked. Zero cases.
That includes all the honor.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I can think of zero cases, as well as certified, because in that one, they are driving the process.
The board. Interrupted, just asked a question. So aside from the glory, you know, the glory of living in a historical honorary landmark, and we're gonna maybe, it won't be historically, but honorary landmark, aside from the glory, what benefits are available to an honorary landmark now? Because, you know, one of the questions is whether if someone living, if someone who lives, you know, they live in an honorary landmark and they reap the benefits, and then they say, okay, we're bulldozing this sucker. Do we, do we want that? Do we want to provide benefits that ultimately don't provide the landmark benefits the village is looking for?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good point because the ordinance changed because of that point. In the early days, there was a monetary reward for an honorary landmark and that they could also apply to the state for a property tax freeze. But the situation became exactly what you described, where someone would enjoy that economic benefit and then sell the house to, let's say, a builder or developer. And it was demolished. And recognizing that that's not a good thing, in twenty, I believe it's twenty thirteen, the ordinance was changed so that that benefit was only for certified landmarks.
Yeah, that's correct.
So I think the question is valid, is what is the reward for landmarking your house other than the glory, as you say? And I think part of that fulfills an educational aspect. But there is not a heck of a lot of economic benefit, if you will. But there is a prestige and there is, you know, a recognition within the village that this house is special. So there is some, I would say, soft value to it.
And Peter, if I, if I might add, from a legal perspective, honorary landmarks are adopted by ordinance through the village board. So that's, that's in the history of the village, and it's also recorded with the county. So it's, it's got the belt and suspenders there outside of the community.
Now, trustee Rubin, the second half of your question, if I remember it, was talking about the demolitions. And it's been our experience that landmarks that were demolished more, a very high percentage of those were purchased by builders and developers after someone sold it to them. And so then they turned around and pretty quickly filed for demolition permit. And what we discovered by talking to some of them and through our experiences that they file as soon as they've closed on the property so that they can claim ownership. And then the one hundred and eighty days doesn't seem to affect their process very much. In other words, it doesn't really slow them down because that six months, they get all their plans drawn up and get their permits in order. And so it really doesn't have a big impact on their process and their schedule.
Other than, is the suggestion that the extra square footage or extra FAR be available for both honorary and certified, or just, we only talk about honor?
Well, in my humble opinion, I think one should think about honorary and certified. But right now, the ones at greater risk are the honorary.
We can do something about certified. We can't really do anything about honorary. And we don't want to penalize people for participating and becoming certified.
The overall concern, if I can put it that way, of the nature of some of the suggestions. And again, kudos to the committee. I think everything is very well thought out. It's certainly very well presented. It's very clear. If you have folks that have asked to be named as an honorary, but specifically did not want to be certified, maybe they thought they couldn't meet all the criteria. Maybe they did not ask to be certified because they did not want to be burdened. They didn't want to burden their properties with all of the current rules that apply to a certified landmark. And so what we have with honorary, what's being proposed are what I look at as, put it this way, too many sticks, not enough carrots. I like the idea of perhaps increasing the FAR to say to somebody, look, here's a different way to go to preserve the economic value that you're obtaining by selling to a developer who's just gonna bulldoze the. You know, you can, you can come out well doing something else, or maybe the developer can come out well doing something. Because they can sell a bigger home when they're gone. Maybe we can ease the rules as to what they can do with the house itself in the transformation of it into a more modern house that'll sell on the market. But I'm concerned about some of these bits that create an extra hassle factor, an extra monetary cost, but that ultimately are not going to stop someone to sell their, from selling their house to a developer who wants to bulldoze the property. It just means the developer's gonna know they have to do all these things. Who wants to bulldoze the property. It just means the developer is gonna know they have to do all these things. They're gonna factor it into account when they make their offer, what they're gonna pay for the property. And the homeowner just gets less money and we wind up at the same place. As opposed, that, which is why I'm focused on positives that we can offer people. Or keeping the property. Or at least most of the property substantially as is, and maybe let them build a modern addition attached to it.
I may add something, if I may add something. I think that the overall uh, idea is this idea of nudging. Which is um, trying to encourage voluntary behavior that benefits the community without. Uh, getting too tight. Excuse me, too tied up in a lot of ordinances and expensive requirements. Um, also, I'd like to add that most, the vast majority of the. Units that have been knocked down. Uh, have been replaced by substantially larger homes. Uh, that is the trend in the building industry. And we're hoping that by nudging people to take a look at their house that they may love, but say, gee, it's just too small for me. Um, to sit down with an architect and say. What can I do uh, to keep my basic building? But do a modern addition that will make it more, not only valuable, but attractive and. Uh, easier to use. Thank you.
And I like that approach. And I like an educational aspect, perhaps. To people in the community broadly, but especially to the people that are the honorary landmark homeowner. If we go down that path, let them know what's new and improved, so to speak, about their options. For their properties. Uh, rather than just, oh yeah, I'm gonna put it on the market, sell and be done with it. And then the person buying it's just gonna scrape the land and it's gone. I, I, I'm, I'm in favor of, of doing something of that nature. I have a little trouble thinking of the octogenarian. That is selling a home that they've lived in and loved and cherished. But you know, it's time. And we're telling them they must show up at a hearing. You know, with their walker in COVID, in winter, you know, if you want to envision all the host of horribles. Or they have to hire someone and go out of pocket, which maybe they can do, maybe they can't. I don't like to spend other people's.
Hey, Gary, can I interrupt that? So as I see it, the octogenarian isn't going to the hearing. The buyer is going to, the person that wants to demolish the house is going to the hearing. So in the case of the octogenarian. It's the buyer, who may be, you know, the developer. Who may be a caricature of developers who just want to bulldoze, build something big. Or maybe a developer who's uh, kind of be susceptible to saying, gee, we could.
Okay, let's play that one out.
But the, but the, I, I don't think the octogenarian typically.
Okay, that's fine. What? Again, if you tell them, hey, here's another economical turn. This is a great house, it's got great bones, it's landmark worthy. And you can, in addition to that, you can build bigger. Than you otherwise could. And have something of real economic value. And if you find the people in the marketplace that want to live at a landmark building, but still have modern amenity. You know, that could be a real home run for a developer. But telling the developer, you have to show up at a hearing and they'll sit there. And they'll, okay, okay, I, what, what is the point of the hearing? What, other, you just trying to shame somebody? I, I, I don't understand. They won't voluntarily come and talk to you. Those are the elements that I'm concerned about, as opposed to focusing on. What I think are the positives, which are great. And worthy of, you know, really going forward with you, so that we save more home.
So I like said, I, I think, I'm not, look, no one knows whether this is at, would actually work, although I know that some of our neighbors are trying this. But the idea is to cause the developer to broaden what he or she is thinking about. And of course, there is. The proposal to, and, and we have to be careful about this, but there's the proposal to increase the FAR. Um, beyond uh, what they could otherwise do. Now, we obviously have to be careful about that, because we have neighbors and, you know. The neighbor may or not, may or may not want to live next to the Taj Mahal, even though the Taj Mahal is historic. But. The problem is that we know that the current system isn't working. So, and the current system is missing the benefit that is proposed here, which the thirty percent FAR, and there may be other things that can be done. But it's also not working, because it's so easy to, for a developer to think. I have a standard house that I build, and I'm just gonna bulldoze this thing and build the standard house that I build. And they have the idea. Is. Let's slow it down a little and, and, you know. So far, we haven't been able to accomplish that. I don't know that this is gonna work. But it seems like a. It, it might help.
I think that we need to be looking at other types of financial incentives. Um, to, to get people to consider, you know, this renovation alternative. Problem is developers, I think it's gonna be virtually impossible to convince an developer unless there is some. Real financial incentive, and I don't even know that that will convince them, you know, developers like certainty and renovating a house is much more difficult. Or can be much more difficult than doing ground up construction where you've done it ten times before. You know your costs, you know what you're gonna run into. So I think, you know, I think it is a much harder thing to do. I definitely um, think the FAR bonus is interesting, but of course, as you mentioned, Howard, we do have to consider. The neighbors, the question is, are there permit fees? Are there other types of things that we could do? That might make a renovation and a preservation of these homes um. More enticing to a developer or to a homeowner.
So just to throw this out, and, and again, I, I don't disagree with any of that. Delay, if it's a real delay, as compared to renovation. Um, that would keep this store property, you know, delays a negative. Um, and so that might encourage developers. I don't know if this is enough of a delay, uh, but maybe it is. And of course, Gary is completely right. That if the developer thinks that it's gonna cost. That much more, uh, the developer may be willing to pay less. Um, and you know, that might mean, by the way, that, that somebody else purchases the house. Uh, it's, it's probably impossible to quantify any of that. So the, the bottom line question is, is it worth it to try? And I.
Yeah, so I think going from six to nine months isn't a huge difference. I. Um, you know, that extra three months isn't going to necessarily make or break a deal. Market currently is so strong that frankly, somebody could be renting that home out. And not really being out of pocket so much. So I don't know that that's gonna be something that is going to change somebody's um. Perspective on it. But you know, certainly it's something that somebody would factor in.
Should it be, you know, it could be, I, I think it was Highland Park that doubled it. Should it be a year? I mean, we don't know, we're. Just doing our best to try to, to try to accomplish a, a goal. Which, you know, it seems like a worthy goal now. But if we wait much longer, it won't matter anymore. There won't be anything left.
I, I have a concern. Of trying to acquire a benefit for the village, for the community, I'll say it more broadly. And impose all of the cost. Of that benefit on a single home. Which is why I want to focus. I like to focus on things that encourage. And uh, expand the opportunities, whether it's reduced permit, you know, go the other way, it's reduced permit fee. And uh, maybe the village has to pick up the costs on some of these things and. Uh, you know, or otherwise, so that. Their economic incentives that are not. Reduction of value of the purchase price that the seller of the home gets. When. Living in a landmark, which they ask for and they know about. Uh, they still intend to sell it to a developer who plans to scrape it. And now you're just talking about what they get paid for.
Hey, you know, we're not gonna know. Whether what they get paid, you know, is less or how much less, and I think if, if, the idea is to slow it down. So, because something good might happen during the interim and then to throw in, eh, eh, throw in a sweetener. To make it more palatable. And, you know. None, Gary, none of the stuff you've said is incorrect, it's just, but if, if we don't slow it down. If, it's, you know, it's as good as gone.
Well, could I ask then what? In these other communities that have longer time periods and other hoops. Uh, that people have to jump through to ultimately just demolish a property. How many times have they gotten their demolition permit? And, you know, application and through this process been able to save. Wha- what, what, what evidence do we have that any of it worked?
Uh, trustee Rubin, if I may, um, we would certainly want to come back um, with a little bit more context. For you, I will say we have readily available from the village of Kennelworth, that in the past twenty years. They've, they've saved about four homes out of um. About twenty-three, um, so some homes have been saved um, from that, but we, I would like for us to come back with more context.
Uh, and let me, let me throw out, and this is not direct evidence, but we have a worse demolition. Statistic than almost anybody else. Now, you know, that may, maybe that's not related to our laws, but it's, you know, it is a fact. That was what Peter started his presentation with.
There'd be. So just. You know, there are probably too many back doors, but limiting the number of demolitions any single entity does over a period of time. So trying to target more developers as opposed to the people who own the homes. Now that's removing demand and, you know, you can spin it in a different way. But um. So if a developer is, is a terror of going through many houses, maybe limiting um. In some way, so it does remove a, a specific type of buyer. Um, again, you're gonna hurt the homeowner, because there's less demand. Um, and it again, could only slow things down potentially, maybe they wait, but. Um, because none of these, I mean, wh- while these. Uh, you know, make things more difficult, I don't, I, I sort of. Agree with, with Gary that they probably don't really stop anything. Um, but like, I, I obviously could be wrong, I don't, I don't really know, but it just seems like when we saw. For instance, the, the, the big house that was torn down, where they were an after. You know, after went on the market, it became an honorary um, landmark, it didn't really stop any. Um, and, and that was just the high profile one that I, that I saw, um. But it just seems like without actual teeth. Um, it just kind of guns up the works, but doesn't really stop anything. Um, so maybe there are other ways, I don't know.
So that, I, that's a, a, another thoughtful comment, I think. Ultimately, because there's no prohibition here. If they want to bulldoze it, ultimately, they're gonna be able to do it. We know that. On the flip side, of course, is that would mean. The impact, the price impact on the homeowner who's trying to sell their house is gonna be less as a result of this. This kind of restriction, which is a time restriction. And the hope is a combination of the incentive, they've come up with one. And the time restriction is that there will be some examples. Where the house, where the significant historical building isn't bulldozed. And the question, to me, the question is whether we should give this a shot, because I don't actually think. I think these restrictions will slow it down. I guess it's possible that a developer could. Try to figure out the monetary cost and pay less, but I think that's sort of unlikely. Uh, but while going through the process, maybe um. Minds will be changed, as you know, Jordan identified. And, you know, we're talking maybe a few houses, maybe that's worth it. That's, that's the idea. Is it gonna work? I don't know. Do we have a good system now? Probably not. Is this gonna be a huge impact on homeowners if we do this? Not really. Um, because by and large, we're dealing with developers who can, who are big boys and, you know, can take it.
I, I, I'm, I'm. I, I just want to say, to me. It seems inconsistent. To, on the one hand, say, who are we talking about? We're talking about the developer. I, I think Gail, you know, hit the nail on the head about what developers are all about. And. I think we maybe need to be a little more creative in coming up with economic incentives that, as you correctly point out. President Rowan aren't gonna. You know, create the Taj Mahal, like, you know, in an outsized, really outsized building that looks out of place. Uh, to their neighbors, that's a very valid point. Uh, but. If we're talking about developers, then we're talking about developers. Talking about homeowners. Isn't it a little different? In, in how you think about it. I do. Um, and I, again, you know. Modest changes and things are fine, but I, I, I do worry about crossing over that line. Where without it, someone volunteering to, for example, become a certified landmark. We're going to do something that imposes. A material cost. Uh, without necessarily showing a benefit to the community. Uh, let alone a material cost on one member of the community solely for the benefit of the community. I just don't think that's very clenco.
May I ask, um, could it, in your mind, what do you see the, um. The large additional costs?
Well. You know, Gail's point's well taken. Six months is perhaps nothing to the developer, because it takes them that long to go through their process anyway, so it really doesn't slow anything down. If you, if you make it long enough, if nine months is probably also possibly just a little longer than their windows, that's probably a reasonable adjustment to that. If we think it will accomplish it. Um, you go out past that, you say, oh, it's two years. Well, that's gonna cost somebody some money when they sell their home. I don't really think anybody can hear, can argue with a straight face. Because you have no idea what the market's like, or interest rates, cost materials, or anything else. So somewhere along that line, it costs the homeowners some money. Because of uncertainty. And you're charging that one homeowner. A cost for the benefit of the community. Without that homeowner putting up their hand and saying, I'm happy to pay, I volunteer. I just. I have trouble with that.
So what if we said, just looking at the list and, and, and again, it's impossible to quantify this. No one will ever know. Two years seems like a huge change, but what if it was, I think matching Highland Park, 365 days. So this is not, this is number five on the recommended list. So it'll, it'll take you longer to bulldoze it. Now, you know, is that cosmically longer? No, but maybe it's longer enough that it's worth considering the alternatives, which you wouldn't otherwise consider. And is that going to necessarily mean that the homeowner is going to take a big hit on the sale? Yeah, probably not. It's not, certainly not in today's market, but let's, you know, you can't always sell your house in Glencoe.
I, I love the logic thought here that on the one hand, it's long enough to cause a real delay. But on the other hand, that won't cost the homeowner. I can't get my arms around those two being coexistent.
President Rowan, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but Commissioner Block has indicated that she wanted to, to say something.
Yeah. And are we, have we run out the string here? We have other stuff supposed to talk about.
It's totally up to, up to you, Village President.
Well, we certainly are not going to stop Commissioner Block, but you know.
Hello, I just wanted to say, um, Highland Park, they do a 365 day demo delay, but they also require the developer to market the property and work with realtors to help market the property and to show that they're actively marketing the property as it's going through its demolition delay. I think Peter did a great job of really highlighting these main points. You don't want to lower your, your permit fees because in Glencoe, they already are fairly low. And I would say, you know, the bigger way to really target the developers would be to increase your permit fees. Right now it's a pretty even entry point for a developer to come in and look at tearing down a home because we have a very simplified permit process. We don't have like a lot of requirements. And it's, it's kind of an easy entry for a developer to come in and tear down a home quickly in Glencoe. So I think there's things in the internal process you can do to really, outside of our recommendations that can prohibit a developer for really attacking the homes in Willmet and tearing them down quickly. And the reason we narrowed it down to these items is we did review a lot of these questions that are coming up and we were trying to make it like a easy entry, kind of just see how these first step goes and not approach anything too aggressively. Thank you.
I have a quick request. If you're ready to move on to a different topic, I would like to have a couple more minutes to follow up on what Erica was talking about. We have some other ideas, but we felt that they would certainly deserve some more robust discussion.
Please go ahead.
Okay. So first one, sorry, apologize. There we go. The first one has to do with the building code. Currently Glencoe uses what's called the international building code. It's widely known, widely adopted. This recommendation is to in look at the international existing building code, the IEBC, because fundamentally it encourages reuse in the demolition. You can see under the precedence, all the communities that have already adopted this up and down the North Shore, including Chicago. Building permit fees, using a hypothetical example of a house, 5,000 square feet, million plus. We did a, a high level analysis of the big fees, not all the small nickel diamonds, but the big ones. And it appears that Glencoe is about in the middle of the permit fees of the different communities, about average. So recommended discussion points, look at raising all the demolition fees across the board, every, not only landmarks. Think about using that to fund community projects such as some infrastructure, street sidewalks, stormwater management issues. Precedents there are Evanston, Highland Park and Lake Forest all have substantial fees. Now, not being home rule, I don't know the legality of that idea. We wanted, we wanted to put it out there. Number two, increase the demolition fees for landmark properties to account for additional staff time for review, community, community communications and so on. Over the last 20 years, Glencoe's had the highest rate of demolitions on the North Shore with about average permit fees. Please consider increasing the permit fees. Regarding community communications, think about requiring all developers to post their project schedules and their anticipated processes to help keep the neighbors and the community informed. As you all know, some of these projects drag out over the course of years and frustrations in the neighborhood mode. Potential posting locations could include electronic service, electronic public works reports, village websites, onsite posting of the contractor and their contact information. Another one is to consider annual meetings between the different commissions and the committees to discuss shared issues. It's our observation that the different commissions kind of operate a little bit in the silos. So for example, our, our commission would be more than happy to meet with the zoning board to talk about some of these things we've talked about tonight and to make some recommendations to you, not only on landmarks, but maybe so that they become aware of some of the issues that we're grappling with. And I think also another example would be to meet with the sustainability group for maybe obvious reasons. Finally, I think there is another idea to think about in the zoning code. And that would be to look carefully at the variances that are granted for new construction after the demolition of a landmark or a significant property. There have been some examples in the recent past where that has happened. Okay. So with that, thank you again very much. Appreciate the time and the consideration and the discussion.
Thank you. Any trustees want to say anymore about this? I, let me just say, by the way, I am very intrigued by, as I was on the zoning board for a long time, by the last idea, which is, okay, if you, if you insist on demolishing a historic house, don't come to us for, for waiver of our zoning requirements. That, you know, that's, that's clever, you know, although to trustee Ruben's point, of course, in theory, that could affect, you know, the price, maybe. I mean, if somebody's thinking that far ahead. And I don't know if they are.
To be fair, I'm in complete agreement. I, I think if you're, that's a good rule. If you're going to take down a landmark, don't ask for variances and extras when we're trying to encourage people not to do that. I'm not wrong with that at all.
Okay. Any other trustees want to talk about it, or should we say, this was very valuable. I think we should pursue a lot of this stuff. I don't know that there's a consensus on which ones. And we're never going to get it perfect. So we had to go for, don't let perfect be the enemy of the good here. And I think we probably ought to try to do this sooner rather than later because, you know, the longer we wait, the more stuff is going to get bulldozed before we try to do something about it.
Can I, can I ask one other question? So we've been talking about the, the honorary, sort of the honorary landmarks at this point. So what about the 224 significant historical properties? Are those properties that could have had the attributes to have been honorary if their owners had so chosen? And just wondering if, you know, what, that when we think about changing the system for honorary, that we also think about some of the, the impact that it might have on some of the significant, significant 224 properties in terms of the, those owners not moving to the next step of seeking honorary status. So I just thought it might be something else to consider as we move along.
Peter, you want to say something about that?
Oh, thanks for the question, Gail. The significant properties in some cases are even more valuably historic. Did I say that right? Historically valuable than the land, than the current landmarks. But for whatever reason, didn't seek the status. I'll be honest with you, on the commission, we've had a debate about whether we should recommend keeping a two level landmark status because you can listen to the struggles this evening about the differences. The, the one, the higher level, it's very clear. It's the honorary one that's throwing all of this into the cloud, the fog, if you will. So the reason for bringing those up is to draw attention to those because they're from an architectural and a, and a built environment perspective, they're every bit as valuable as the house that has the plaque.
Right. And I'm just hoping that we can preserve those houses too. Because that's three times as many houses as the ones that are honorary. So I think that when we look at this, if there's any way to, you know, incorporate any kind of incentive there, that might be something to consider because, you know, I think we all want to see the preservation of these properties.
You know, the, if the idea of the zoning bonus seems like it has a little bit of traction by extending that to that category of house seems like a logical step. Because some of the same issues that the developer world will argue that the, with the landmark homes, they're going to make the exact same argument for those significant ones.
Or you're going to have the interesting situation where they're going to be coming to you and saying, I want landmark status so I can get the zoning bump and then I can.
Yes.
That is the way to go.
So in Highland Park, is Highland Park the one that identifies sort of landmark factors? And if you have a lot of factors, you get more limits and maybe more benefits. And if you have only a few factors, you have less limits and maybe less benefits and there's a lot to talk, there's a lot to talk about and think about here. We have obviously not reached a resolution. It wouldn't be, but it seems like it wouldn't be impossible for us to reach a resolution, which we could all maybe agree on and also agree that it might need to be fixed in a year if it was not working out. And I just sort of feel like we should get ourselves to the point where we're doing something. Whatever we do, it's not likely to ruin the town. And I don't think any of the proposals we've made are going to be ruinous financially for anybody. And, and the hope is that they'll cause some people, some developers, some owners to think, oh, there's another way.
I would, if I could, oh, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, this is Dudley. I think there is general agreement on the policy and process recommendations. We didn't talk a lot about them, but they seem to be pretty straightforward. Perhaps that's something that can move to the next level while we're dealing with the details on the other items. Thank you.
And I was, yeah, I was just, I just wanted to make sure from the, the commissions and the staff standpoint, that there's clarity on issues that the board wants us to continue to explore. I do think there, as I was trying to jot notes down during the course of the conversation, there are some home rule versus non-home rule questions that probably need to be, we need to engage the village attorney on relative to some fee structures, timelines. I want to make sure the board wants us to pursue those and will certainly do so if that's, if that's the preference. And I want to, again, I want to perhaps make sure, and Peter, you know, you, you let me know if you guys feel like you have enough to work with that when we come back with something at a future meeting, we've, we've done enough to, to continue to move the ball down the, down the field. So Peter.
You're first.
Okay. I thought this was a good discussion. Thank you all for your comments. My head is spinning a little bit at the moment. But again, it comes back to carrots and sticks from our perspective, not all, no, not all lollipops. And so we'll continue to refine these. We'll look into the question about, has it actually worked in the different communities? And, you know, we'll start to work on some of those continuing item, the, the, the second set, this list, we'll start to engage with staff on some of these to get their initial reactions. And I would like to add one to this, potentially reducing permit fees for renovations for landmarks, landmark renovation. So there's another carrot. Don't ask me what the fee is, but that concept. So I think we have enough homework.
Absolutely. And Phil, to your question, yeah, we ought to figure out which ones of these we can do, because I think, you know, in theory, we're interested in looking at all this stuff to come up with the package. Which ones can we do? And if, if there are ones that we can't do because we're not home rule, we'll add that to the list as we, you know, consider whether we ought to ask our residents whether they want to be home rule like everybody else around us.
Okay, we will, staff and, and the HPC will reconvene together and, and Peter, it may be helpful. We'll pull the village attorney into those, those next set of conversations. So we get, we get that rolling along. So the next discussion with the village board has even more meat on the bone than tonight.
Great.
But can I, let me just say to, to the folks on the Historic Preservation Commission or soon to be renamed, the Preservation Commission, thank you for a, you know, terrific presentation, terrific discussion, very helpful to put the comps in there with the other, the other villages. It was, it was, even though, you know, we haven't solved it, we haven't figured it out, we don't all agree, we, there are all these problems, but this was great. So I, I am, in behalf of the trustees, I'm very grateful for what you guys have done.
And only because I'm the loud mouth that had problems. Let me reiterate that I, I agree a hundred percent. This is a laudable goal and one we should continue to work to achieve. I, you know, we have some slight disagreements philosophically, but as Howard said, I'm sure we can get to the finish line and get something in place that hopefully will improve the situation. And we would never have gotten there. But for all of your hard work and excellent thought and presentation in all of this, this is really well thought out. There's no quibbling about that. Please, please understand my, my concerns here and there are not about the goals or, or the mission. So thank you all.
Well said. Okay. Thank you. Now we can get to something that's been a little controversial. We've gotten a lot of communications from our residents in both directions. The fourth item on the agenda is discussion regarding regulating backyard chickens on private property. And I would ask Director of Public Works, Dave Mao and Public Works Management Analyst Jeff Maudsley to present. And I do want to thank all the residents who've written in. And I do want to thank all the residents who've written in. Uh, and I want to assure them that we've gotten their communications and we are considering, they're thoughtful and we're considering all of them, so, uh. Dave and Jeff, take it away.
All right, thank you, President Ron. As a reminder, uh, we started discussing this uh back on September twenty third at the committee, the whole meeting. Broached the idea with the village board, asking them for their initial input about whether we should move forward with uh, considering whether to allow chickens on residential properties in Glencoe. Currently, they are not allowed by ordinance. Uh, so it would take an ordinance change to to permit that. Um, and at the meeting, um the village board's opinion was to investigate the matter. Uh, to with some, and they had, and you guys had some uh concerns that uh that you brought up. For example, uh, limiting the number of total chickens on the property, uh, not allowing roosters. And trying to mitigate uh noise and disturbances to other properties. You are, you also wanted to make sure that we received input from the community at large about where what they thought about allowing chickens in residential areas. Uh, so we went back and we we looked at some sample ordinances and and we drafted a potential ordinance that uh we included in your packet. And we also uh received, asked for and received several comments from the residents uh about how they felt about this change. Uh, we received uh twenty eight total uh that we included in your packet. Um, it was uh fairly close in terms of support versus oppose. Uh, we had twelve support and sixteen oppose. Um, so not an overwhelming majority one way or the other. So when looking at the ordinance, we tried to address the concerns that the village board had. Uh, we the ordinance that in front of you, for consideration, creates a permit system so that we know who out there has chickens. Uh, we limited it to six. We prohibit roosters. We mandate the chickens must be kept in a pen or a coop. Uh, and mandate a minimum amount of space of four square feet per chicken. Um, that way they're not just running loose in the yard. Require the restructures be resistant to predators, so as not to invite them into residential area and that they're that the areas that the residents keep the chicken are clean at all times. They don't emit odors or or invite uh rodents or anything like that. So we have some discussion points and and uh you're not limited to just the ones on the screen here, but just some, just some things for discussion, but the big one here is the first one is is um, do we want to continue moving forward with exploring this change in Glenco ordinance and allowing them or not? I think that's the the key question first, and then and then once, once we get consensus on that, we can, we can discuss some of the other particulars in the draft ordinance.
Okay, uh, that was a thoughtful uh presentation, Jeff, thank you. And let me uh invite, and we we've, like I said, we've gotten a lot of comments. I mean, to me a big question is the negative comments we've received have all said. It's gonna be noisy, it's gonna be smelly, it's gonna bring in predators that are gonna eat my pets. Um, and um those are all bad things. So a- and and I note that the draft ordinance appears to address those things. The question is, in the real world, do the fixes that are included in our ordinance work? So, uh, you know, our backyard hens, so we're not including roosters, do backyard hens have the negatives? Um, sort of inherently that people that are objecting are worried about. Um, and is our, or, you know, are these ordinance provisions, you know, kind of are they likely to fix the problem? And I don't know the answer to that. Uh, and I would invite the trustees to talk about this and um, if trustee Mulvaney is here, uh, he's been the sort of proponent and I I would welcome his thoughts and everybody else's.
Well, this is Peter. I am here and with respect to question number one to the village of our backyard chickens, um, yes. And, end of story. So right now, as I sit here, I can hear a dog barking from from at least four doors down. A chicken cannot make that much noise. Oh, when, a hen, I'm sorry, a rooster certainly, but not not a hen. I I think that's a, I think the noise is a non-issue, hens simply um don't, don't make much noise. As far as the odors uh go, you know, I mean, not to get gross, but it takes thousands of chicken droppings to equal one dog dropping. Uh, the the odor issue, I I also see as a non-issue. Um, that's, it's just the waste just doesn't, um, with any with any management at all, even with a poor management. The waste of the uh of the chickens does not create a a bad odor. Certainly, um, you know, you could have coyotes, we have coyotes, foxes in Glencoe. Certainly, that's a risk to the pets. I don't see that as a risk to the residents. But I I feel like the proposals put forth by the staff are strong and thoughtful and address the concerns. Personally, I just don't see the the fear of of allowing um hens to to live in Glencoe.
Thank you. Uh, other trustees with.
I agree with Pete.
Um, so I actually disagree, and I think we have to take into account kind of the comfort level of our residents, and I I think that there are, you know, a lot of people who are not comfortable with this. If we want to, you know, expose our children and our community to um to chickens, I think it could be fine, but in a common setting, I mean, whether it's you know, trying this for a year in the community garden and they would, you know, have that exposure. And at that point, if we find that this is something that is desirable, then we could, you know, revisit this and see about actually allowing it at people's homes. But I think to go from where we are now, I'm I'm not sure um what uh, you know, if that's going to be the best process. So I would rather see it in a more controlled community setting like the community garden or a park district facility where all of the community could be exposed to to them and not just the the few people um who decide to actually raise them in their backyards.
Thank you. Um, okay, any anybody else?
I I was just gonna say, to to me, I I'm in favor. Um, I would be in favor of a permit, so if somebody is not taking care or 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 not following the the ordinance, that they can lose their their right for chickens. Um, to me, six chickens seem or hens seems high. Um I think maybe fewer to make this, these are supposed to be pets, not um, and I don't, I mean, I I I just don't know how many eggs a chicken produces, but um, six strikes me as high. Um, especially at the beginning, but when to Gail's point, we we don't really know what we're getting into necessarily, so um, I would like to see that reduced. Um, but hope, you know, setting out some pretty strict rules that'd go along with the permit and that the permit can be revoked. Maybe would hopefully relieve some of the 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 problems or the potential problems.
I think there is one, one egg per hen, I believe.
What's that?
One egg per hen per doe.
Okay.
I'd like to, uh, thank you for letting me join the conversation. Uh, I'd like a better feeling as to how popular this has been with our neighboring communities. I know we did a survey where we looked at the elements of the um different ordinances, but I don't know about their actual um applicability, how many people actually use it. Um, I've heard rumors that only a handful of people in all of Evanston have done anything. Um, I'm just trying to understand what I'll call the dimensions of the issue. Um, if I could get uh um more comfortable with that, um, I think I'd be more willing to go ahead with this.
Jeff, do we know, do we know the answer to that? And I will, I I would note, by the way, um, that if very few people are doing it, um, it's not likely to be a big problem for the people who aren't with, obviously with the potential exception of somebody who's next door. So and what's the experience? Do we know the experience of these other uh villages and and cities?
We don't, but if you would like us to reach out to them and and start those conversations, we're we're certainly able to.
Yeah, well, that that, uh, I mean, certainly, uh, Dudley's got a point, we should find out, but like I said, it goes both ways. That is if it's, you know, if if a lot of people aren't, I I don't think we would proceed because we thought that three quarters of the uh residents, uh, the the homeowners in this village would were gonna have chickens.
Not so sure, three quarters of the people in town want chickens, we will have chickens. That's called politics. Um, but I think that the proposal, the proposed ordinance, again, very well thought out. And I'm and I'm gonna add, and I don't mean this as a throwaway, as usual, staff, as usual, has done a wonderful job here. Um, I I'm in favor of the ordinance, I'm in favor of allowing people to do it. Uh, I could make a joke about saying if you want to deal with predators, just buy a wolf hump. But um, the question I have is and we don't know if it'll be a few or a couple dozen or whatever it is, but can we make sure the process for getting the permit to have the chickens is that before you actually allow chickens on the property, someone maybe for the village, I hate to think about the administrative element, but has actually gone, done a little inspection, make sure that, you know, the coop looks right and the fencing looks good and somebody didn't, you know, do it very poorly and we're gonna start from a bad place, especially at the beginning of this um change to what people can expect in their neighborhood. Like to make sure that the installations at least start off looking good.
Very sound, all these comments are sensible.
Trustee Ruben, if I could drill down on that a little bit more, would you would you want to have the coop then be subject to, say, a building permit then, that they'd have to submit a building application along with like the license application? Is that is that kind of what you're where you're going?
Look, I don't want to overgild this lily, I'm like, but I think that if you're going to first of all, I do think we should have permits. I don't think they should be limited in number either, unless we're calling it a pilot program. Um, for a period of, for a brief period of time. I think we should either let people do it that want to or not. But that said, I think permits are appropriate and including the fact that if you don't do what you're supposed to do, if you're a bad neighbor, then you get your permit taken away and you don't get to keep chickens in it. But at at the start, I'm concerned about people that have not done this before, didn't grow up on a farm or whatever. And they're being told, oh, you need a coop, and they go get something online and they throw something in the backyard. And it turns out it's surrounded by some kind of so-called fencing that, you know, a toddler could knock over, let alone a coyote that's and, you know, I I'd like somebody to have some standards as opposed to issuing any kind of separate building permit, but saying before you get your permit, we want to go see what it's gonna look like, where the chickens are gonna be. And how many are you gonna have and take a look and see, yeah, that looks like it's the minimum square foot, so that we start off on the right.
Yeah, that that's clearly sensible, and if um trustee Underdunk is right that in Evanston, which is way bigger than we are, they have only a handful, it won't be an administrative problem for our staff to pick this up. I, so I I've just counted votes. Um, there seems to be a a consensus, not not everybody, but there's a consensus that we should be proceeding with this. All the comments from the trustees seem to track the points. Uh, Jeff, that are in your, you know, discussion points, so I think let's.
President Rowan, I I, before you conclude, we did get one public comment. That was to be read into the record tonight, and Jordan, Jordan has that. I think we should do that prior to.
Okay, let's, let's, let's do it.
Certainly, just give me one moment. Um, the the public comment we received uh to be read into the record is from resident Carolyn Winter. And her comment is as follows, hello, I'm opposed to having chicken coops in the residential areas of the village. They are an attractive nuisance for fox slash raccoons and 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 coyotes. The animals are already having a difficult time in the village as a threat to small pets, dogs and cats, and potentially a danger to small children. They are also a potential traffic, they they also cause potential traffic accident issues. There are sufficient habitats in the surrounding forest preserves where they can live without interaction with residents and vehicles. We do not need to ask them to be more present in the residential areas. This issue was addressed a few years ago and the request was denied. Nothing has changed. Thank you, Carolyn, and that was the one comment we received for the record.
Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Winter. Um, that's consistent with the number of comments we've gotten. Uh, and what we're trying to figure out here is the ex the extent to which that's gonna happen or not, and, you know, um that's what we're working on, but uh, I I think uh, nobody's made final decisions, but I think the board is appears to be comfortable with moving forward. Uh, with an ordinance that would provide protections against what the objectors are worried about. So we should, um, and and we should, you know, further investigate the actual experience in our neighboring villages and cities as to whether what the objectors are worried about has actually happened, because if it has uh, you know, I think that uh trustee's minds would be changed, so let's, let's because I think uh there's consensus that we should proceed uh, to see if we can refine this and satisfy ourselves one way or the other as to whether the proponents or the objectors are right. And then if we said that if the objectors are right, we'll just stop. If we think uh we have enough protections here, then uh we can try it with protections built into the ordinance so that if it turns out to be a mistake, we'll undo it.
Listen, I I do have two quick things, sorry. Uh, one is absolutely, the coop comes first, right? So you have to have a coop before you have a hen. Uh, so this notion of inspecting the coop before the hens come is a good one. Uh, we don't want hens without the coop. Coop coop first. The second is, I would suggest a an in-between policy if we need to. Uh, and that would be allow an exemption. We have an existing law. Uh, why not allow an exemption? And and just simply attach the conditions as outlined in these policies that were recommended. And then we'll find out if people want to apply for an exemption. If they do, they can be issued with these policy conditions attached. And we'll get a sense of it without having to necessarily change an ordinance or code at this stage, if that makes people uncomfortable with the threat of hens.
Okay, well, we should, uh, thank you. Those are both thoughtful comments, and we should, you know, as we're doing this, we'll obviously want to confer with village council as to what's the best way to do this with, you know, um, suitable controls. Uh, whether that's uh limited exemptions or limited permits or, you know, so, but let's I think there's probably enough. I think there's probably enough guidance for staff to work with our lawyers and see if we can refine this. No one's made any decisions because we're ultimately gonna have to be satisfied uh that we're not gonna make this place coyote heaven.
Okay, we will get to work on it and bring it back to a future meeting.
The next item, thank you um uh Jeff for a terrific presentation and to the trustees for thoughtful comments. Uh the next item is five on the uh committee of the whole agenda, which is discussion of a potential zoning code amendment to increase the ability of the zoning board of appeals to adjust front yard setback requirements for accessory structures on corner and through lots. Um and I'll ask Taylor Baxter to present and um I I'll let me start by mentioning that I have been bugging. This is an issue that I saw when I was on the zoning board. Um uh I've also bugged Taylor about a related issue, although it's a cousin, which is uh it which occurs whenever you have presumed front side and backyards because you have a property that's either a corner lot or a through lot. And so it's, you know, it's not clear without these presumptions as to what do we call the front yard, what do we call the side yard, what do we call the backyard? With that, Taylor, take it away.
Thank you, President Rowan. So uh the background on this issue, uh we have had a relatively small number of uh residents who have expressed concerns about um their relative lack of uh whether they're um the restrictions on accessory structures and what are functionally their rear yard, often they're only only the only uh rear yard um that they have on their property. Um right now, accessory structures are prohibited in front yards, um which are in single-family residential districts, um anywhere between thirty and fifty feet, and the required setback is thirty and fifty feet from the front lot line. Um there's also another um restriction on accessory structures that prevents them from being any closer to the street than fifty percent lot depth. So for example, if you have a a two hundred foot depth, uh two hundred foot deep lot, an accessory structure could not be more uh could not be less than one hundred feet from the street. So it really um um restricts strictly uh restricts any accessory structures um in front yards. Uh the ZBA can grant variations to reduce setbacks, um but by no more than twenty percent. So uh you know, if you have a required setback of fifty feet, you can go to forty feet. But sometimes with these accessory structures, um due to that lot depth requirement, the fifty percent lot depth requirement, uh they have pretty significant setbacks. And so that twenty percent um reduction uh may not be um enough to really allow accessory structures in in a front yard, which in general is a is the intent of the zoning ordinance. Um you know, the the ordinance really intends to keep you from putting things up, you know, between your house and the street and the front yard. Um once they're in a backyard. However, again, there are some some uh very small number of lots, but this is not working so well. Um what is a front lot line? A front lot line is um uh first of all, front setbacks are measured from the front lot line. Um and the front lot lines can be different on different lots. Um interior lots, which are just your your typical lots, which only border one street, um the front lot line is the lot line that abuts the street. On a corner lot, the front lot line is the shorter of the two street adjacent lot lines, regardless of which way the house faces. So if you have two lot lines and one is slightly even slightly shorter than the other, regardless of which way the house faces, that shorter lot line is your front lot line and this front setback is taken from that front lot line. So this can, in in a lot of cases, this works perfectly well, but in some cases it uh causes problems. On three lots, which are lots um that have frontage on two non-intersecting streets, both street adjacent lot lines or front lot lines, regardless of house orientation. So you have that forty to fifty foot um front setback requirement off of both streets, regardless of which way your house faces. Um so again, on a small number of lots, this really does severely restrict really uh severely restrict what you can do in um in in what could be your only functional rear yard. I'm gonna attempt to uh change my slideshow here to some photos, just a moment. So here are just a few examples, these are in your um agenda packet of a few um of these lots um where this has caused problems. These are examples, there there really aren't uh too many of these um throughout the village, but there are some. Um here's an example, blue, the blue line here is the front lot line technically. Um even though this house faces north and faces Lakewood Drive, um the front yard and the and that fifty foot setback requirement is off of Sheridan Road here. So you really can't put any accessory structure in this yard, it's to the east, excuse me, to the west of this house. Uh this is actually a property where somebody wanted to build a small pergola out here, we told them they couldn't do it. Um they had to attach the pergola to their house and kind of squeeze it in. Um because um there's, it had to meet that fifty foot setback requirement and also the fifty percent uh lot debt department off the street. These green areas are are approximate, uh but it really reflect that fifty percent lot debt restriction. That's a picture uh looking at that uh what is technically the front yard. Um so it's very well screened, um functionally, it's a rear yard, uh but again, you can't put any accessory structures there. Um here are a couple on the corner of Dundee and Bynlick, this house to the the on the east side here actually uh came in for a variation to put a pool um in what is technically their front yard, but um is uh is uh functionally their rear yard. Um you can see some accessories, some some, it's it's not uncommon to see some swing sets and playsets out here. Um if you came in for a permit, we might uh run into some trouble on some of these lots, um getting a permanent structure put in these front yards. Um but again, they function as a rear yard, um they look like a rear yard from the street. Uh that's the one to the to the west there. Um through lots, similar problems, um front yard setbacks off of both sides of these of these houses can restrict what accessory structures you can put there. This is what it looks like, um functionally rear yards, but technically front yards with restrictive front yard setbacks. Similar ones here that we had some some requests along this street for some small accessory structures, some grills, um permanent, you know, permanent outdoor, um five, I believe it's a fireplace, it had to be pushed um pretty close to the house um or eliminated uh due to accessory structure setback requirements off that that back street. So again, it's not, it's not many houses, not many lots, um but uh in the in the lots that um that it affects, it can have quite an impact on um on what you can do. Uh go back to the PowerPoint, just one second. Um so to, if this is something that the board decides they want to explore further um to address this problem, it is gonna require some zoning code updates. Staff does not recommend making blanket changes to setback requirements. Um we don't want people to just be allowed to put things in their front yard uh whenever they want. Um we feel that the setback requirements meet the intent of the zoning code um on the vast majority of lots right now. Um to keep things out of the front, what are functionally front yards and technically front yards, but on a small number of of these uh properties, um we may need to make some changes. But we don't feel that uh allowing administrative reductions would be the best path forward either. Um we recommend considering an increase in the ZBA's ability to reduce front setbacks only for accessory structures and only on corner and through lots. So this would be a um an increase from the current twenty percent um ability, the ability to reduce setbacks by up to twenty percent um to some more significant number, only on the small number of lots. So the ZBA would consider each request on a case-by-case basis. And uh the ZBA would be able to apply conditions of approval as needed. Uh for example, height, location, screening, et cetera. So they'd be able to look at these lots individually and say, okay, this is uh may technically be a front yard uh per our code, but we feel that it's functionally a rear yard. Um and we feel that an accessory structure should be allowed to have some more lenient setbacks here. Um and there may be conditions that would apply. Um we've given a, you know, a potential solution could be a, you know, to allow the ZBA to go down to fifteen feet. Um this was, this was chosen because this is your typical corner side setback. So it's not uncommon at all to see accessory structures fifteen feet from a street throughout the village. If you have a standard one hundred foot wide residential lot, that's your corner side setback requirement. So it would not be something that would be unusual to see uh to see accessory structures that distance from the street um anywhere in the village, really. Um so that could be a potential um potential landing spot for a a zoning code update here. But uh we're we're open to to um changing that as as the board and the zoning commission see fit. This would be the potential zoning code update that would be needed. Um this is in the list of um variations that the zoning uh that the zoning board of appeals can currently grant. Currently, they can reduce twenty percent uh side rear or front, any any setbacks by up to twenty percent. The bold underlying text is what we would um add. Um this text would speci- uh specifically and only apply again to corner and through lots and would only be for accessory structures and would be to no less than fifteen feet, but we could choose a a different number than fifteen feet as as deemed to be appropriate. Uh the change in Green Bay Road, um that's a, that was just an outdated um reference that Glenn Coe wrote in the code. Um so next steps, uh first of all, we'd we'd like to get some feedback on uh on this issue and the need for potential zoning code amendments. Um if the board feels that this should have further consideration, um we'd ask that you um instruct staff to prepare a resolution to bring back to you at your next meeting. Uh that resolution will refer this to the zoning commission for a public hearing and a recommendation, in which case it would um which time it would come back to the village board for a review and a final a final decision on any potential zoning code updates. Um President Rowan, I don't know if if we have time, did you want me to get into this related?
I said, we have, you know, don't take a lot of time, but it seems to me this is a cousin. So it's worth doing.
This, this was something that is not, it's not addressed in your in the agenda packet, uh President Rowan asked me just to touch on it at this point, and it's not something that I feel that we're we're ready to bring any uh any um proposed ordinance changes to you. This was just a kind of a related um a a related um concern that some residents had on corner lots. Um where again, as you can see here to the north of this corner lot, this lot line is slightly shorter than the lot line on the east. Which means even though this house faces the east, the required front setback is to the north. Which means that the required front, the required rear setback is on the south and the required side setback is on the west. So this means that uh you could push in addition to this house or push a house here as close as ten feet to this west side uh west side property line. And um you know, this this caused a lot of concern to some neighbors, uh the fact you could build off the back of this house um to the west to as close as ten feet from that rear proper to that, excuse me, to the west property line, which is a side property line. Um a lot of neighbors raised concerns about how we determine what a front and side corner um and and based on that of what a rear and a side setback um would be. Uh it comes straight from the zoning code, the the orientation of the house is 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 not um taken into consideration whatsoever in determining this. Um so this may be something to to look into in the future. There there may be some, you know, changing the way we we establish front and um side lot lines could potentially have significant impacts throughout the village on corner lots. Um because most houses in the village have been built per the standards that we have now. And so if you change them, it does run the risk of throwing a lot of existing houses into non-conformity, which could be a big problem. This is not something that um that we've done a a lot of research into at this point, but it's something that um may be uh coming up for consideration in the future, but this is not, this is not the uh um ordinance change that will, that's that's in front of you.
Let me, let me just throw out that the fix for the problem that, I mean, this is a real case in which um a developer came in with a plan, it didn't actually comply uh with zoning and they were basically turned down, but then they discovered that they could do what they wanted to the detriment of the neighbors, the what, you know, would normally be called the backyard neighbors under the zoning code and the and it's clearly, you know, it's it's because of the uh what he looks like a backyard to the neighbor is a side yard to us and therefore instead of being thirty feet, it's ten. Um and the the possible fix is maybe the same as um the fix that we're talking about under the Taylor's initial presentation, which is if there's an objection, the neighbor could take it to the zoning board for them to look at it and see if it's, you know, if it's fair. So no one, uh the fix would not say that anybody is non-conforming anymore, i- if they're already there. But it just says if you're gonna do something new, uh the zoning board could take a look at it. And it's the same, it's it's all the same problem. It's based on a presumed front yard, side yard, backyard, when there's a choice. Okay, so that's the end of my speech.
That's, that's all that I have.
Uh board members, do we want, I mean?
Yeah, this is, this is Dudley uh talking. Um Taylor, this does not relate at all to the percent lot coverage requirements uh or the building spacing requirements for accessory structures under the code.
It it would not, no, those those would remain in place.
Okay.
Right now, you have a six percent lot coverage maximum for accessory structures.
And that would not change.
Right, and accessory buildings, uh that's typically applied to to roof structures, um at the ten, a ten percent, a ten-foot separation requirement between them. So for example, we haven't typically applied that separation to like an air conditioning unit. Um but you know, a a detached garage, for example, has to be ten feet away from the house.
Yeah. Okay, makes a lot of sense to me, thank you.
Any other trustees wanna, I mean, wanna talk about uh a fix to a problem that we see periodically?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree that it's kind of a good, you know, solution to kind of a real world problem, it doesn't affect that many lots, but when it does, you know, the way it's currently written um does create some problems, so I would also be in favor of this.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, um all right, so I think there's clear direction to proceed with the specific fix. And uh Taylor, I, you know, it's it's potentially more common, although I don't think in the real world it'll come up that often, but I think a lot of us felt on the zoning board that uh an injustice was gonna happen and did um in this, in this, in the Sunset case. So I I I would hope that you would cons, you know, look into whether there's a similar fix, not changing the ordinance, but uh in a major way, but simply allowing for the possibility of zoning board review when you have uh a a presumed um you know, side yard that looks to everybody affected like the backyard.
We we will absolutely look into that and and get back to you with some some potential fixes for that. It might, it might take some creativity in the in that list of um allowable variations for the for the ZBA.
Right, yeah, a- and 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 again, I is, is the zoning board with it, is it okay under our non-home rule status for the zoning board for to be doing this kind of a fix?
It, my my understanding, and I've I've talked about this with the village attorney, um is that we are, we are free to update the um the the list of uh allowable variations that the ZBA can grant. Um we're not changing the this, the um the criteria that they use to make decisions, which comes from from the state, um which could be more of an issue, um if we were trying to to change that, but we can allow the the ZBA to to grant different types of variations.
So I am, it's, on what you presented today clearly seems like it's allowable. And the problem I've identified, it wasn't just me, it was the zoning board identified back when we did that thing on
Absolutely.
Sunset. Uh I don't know whether that's something we could fix by kicking into the zoning board under the uh under our non-home rule status, but let's find out. Because what the goal with all of this zoning is to make our village look the way we want it to look, which I think we've largely achieved. Allow homeowners and neighbors to feel that they're protected and just feel like in every individual case we're doing justice and every once in a while you've identified one and then there was this other one, we sort of look at and we think bad result. So it'd be nice to not have any bad results.
Absolutely, we'll we'll get to work on that.
Okay, thank you for um a very helpful presentation. Uh and I think uh Taylor, you think you have enough guidance? And I think, Taylor, you think you have enough guidance to go forth?
I do, yes.
Oh, that's great. Okay, the last item. And we have eleven minutes, and if that's not enough, let me know. The last item for discussion is discussion of residential street lighting in Glencoe. Dave Mao is going to present.
Yes, good evening. This will at least start the conversation. So I appreciate the trustees' time and attention tonight. As we noted in the write-up that went out with the agenda. Existing street light system in the village is kind of broken into three different areas. And I'm going to be assisted by Jordan on my slides here. And, and just, just a quick review that, the first being the downtown business district and the commuter parking lots. These are village-owned and maintained cast aluminum custom light poles and luminaires. And, and those have been installed in phases, streetscape improvement phases over the last twenty years or so. The second area in the village is up in the Skokie Heights, Skokie Ridge subdivisions. These are also village-installed and village-maintained streetlights. There are also a commercial. Aluminum, aluminum post and luminaire. That is again, is different than the rest of the village. So then the balance, which is some three hundred and eighty plus. Streetlights in the village are the more traditional commed. Utility poles with, with lights, light standards. All, all the lighting in the village over the course of the last five years has been converted to LED lamps. Both, the, both the business district and the, and the Skokie Heights and ridges. As well as the village is one of the first communities to participate in ComEd's LED lighting changeover program. So all of our. Street lighting system village, throughout the village is, is supplied, supplied LED lighting. The reason for the conversation to start tonight is the village. Does not currently have a program or policy in place to address requests for additional streetlights. Within our, our existing GIS system, we have commed circuits and streetlights identified. Got a couple examples here just to give a little context. That demonstrates the issue. Here's a, here's a subdivision in North Glencoe, north of the Takah Center. Where we've got an entire subdivision with a single streetlight. It's a bit of an anomaly, but, but that's one extreme. Next slide, Jordan. We also have locations, long, long cul-de-sac streets, dead-end streets that have. No lighting on them. Here's the Rock Gate Lane, east, east side of town off of Sharon Road. Currently no existing street lighting. And then the last example is a little more typical. This is down in the presidential streets. Where we have, you see a grid, all the dots are, by the way, are existing streetlights. You see a grid and there's a, there's an intersection here and there where we might be missing a streetlight. It's also a location where we've had inquiries about a mid-block streetlight. So without, without a formal policy and plan in place, we really. We have not addressed these holistically over the last thirty years. You've only had a handful of new streetlights installed. I think the methodology back in the day, you know, some of these streetlights have been in place for forty, fifty years or longer. Was generally a streetlight at every intersection, but we find exceptions around town. And then on longer block faces, there might be a mid, mid-block streetlight. But there's a balance and we recognize that because, you know, where. Anywhere there's an interest in a streetlight, there's probably a, a competing interest not to have that area overly illuminated. And so there's a balance. The process has evolved with commed in the last ten years, which is a little more involved. There's upfront costs. It involves their new business division. And, and generally, new streetlights are going to cost from three to five thousand dollars. Per streetlight for the initial, for, for the engineering, the installation. And then, and then they become part of the, the ongoing inventory of lights that are billed on a monthly flat rate basis. Current industry guidelines for new communities, new subdivisions. You're, you're going to generally see streetlights on a much, a much more frequent spacing, even up to every three hundred feet. We, we, staff sees issues with that on a, on a village of our age and stage. And is not necessarily recommending that, but you know, ultimately the proper level of street lighting in residential districts. You know, has, has, has multiple purposes. Safety and policing being, being a couple factors as well as providing, you know, adequate. Street lighting at intersecting streets. Other factors that are going to influence would be the absence or presence of sidewalk. And also the proximity of certain streets to schools, parks and other places of, you know, more public attraction. So we, we don't have a formal recommendation tonight, but wanted to at least open it up and get some initial feedback, next steps. From staff's perspective would be to. To do a little bit further investigation in the industry and maybe come back with a recommendation. Again, right now, if we get a single resident that contacts us about a request for a streetlight at a specific location. We don't really have a process. For, for reviewing and making a recommendation and why one location having higher priority over the other. And the other thing to add that we noted in here, you will recall that we included a small allocation for. Street lighting improvements in the approved bond referendum last spring. So we have a resource over the next three years. To potentially address some of these locations where we, we, we see inadequate street lighting. So with that, I'd open it up and certainly answer any questions to the extent we can at this point.
President Rowan, one thing I would mention before we jump in, I know we have at least two public comments on this subject. That you may want to have read into the record.
Let's, let's, so let me say thank you today for an excellent presentation. We, we don't have enough time to really talk about this, but I think. It, it, somebody should speak up if they don't think the village staff should proceed with this initiative. Cause I think they should, but let's, let's get the comments read into the record.
Thank you, President. Sorry, just y'all. We received two public comments about this agenda item. The first public comment is from resident Alyssa Liebovitch at three five seven Adams Avenue. And Alyssa's comment is as follows. Dear Village Board, I'm writing regarding the need for streetlights on Adams Avenue. I returned to Glencoe after growing up here with my children in twenty eighteen. At which time I saw a safety issue with the lack of street lighting on Adams. Despite my home being well-lit, I witnessed visitors having difficulty navigating the streets and sidewalks. Even tripping due to a lack of any street lighting. Obviously, this is a serious safety issue. I brought it up to the village several times over the years. It has also become a disturbing security issue. I had someone repeatedly ringing my bell and banging on my door the other night. This was very concerning. The person was already gone when I got to my door. I looked out to see who or where they were and all I saw was pitch blackness. A streetlight could have helped me see a person or car, and I could have relayed that information to the police, but it was just a wall of black. Also, there are new homes being constructed on this block. Their work often spills into the sidewalk and grass near the street. Creating bumpy terrain or holes in the ground. Also, safety issues as one tries to navigate it in the pitch blackness. Clearly, these issues increase liability for the village, but gratefully, we have now passed a referendum which could enable a solution. I hope you understand this need. Thank you, Alyssa. Our second comment is from resident Sue Fishbein at three six one Woodlawn Avenue. And Sue's comment is as follows. I would like to improve street lighting around Linden Avenue from Green Bay Road to Woodlawn Avenue to illuminate the sidewalk. This route is used by many walking from the Hubbard Woods train station and it is quite dark, especially in the winter where the side. Where the sidewalk can be icy. I often have to use a flashlight or walk in the street. Perhaps consider some solar lighting in a few places along the sidewalk. It does not need to be bright or shine on lawns or houses, but only illuminate the sidewalk at various intervals to improve safety. And could be done on just the west side of the street, which seems to be the side usually used by walkers. Thank you. President Rowan, those are the two comments we received.
As, as usual, I want to thank our residents for their thoughtful comments, which we're going to consider. Unless any of the trust, we've run out of time. Unless any of the trustees want to comment, I think we should. Kick this back to the staff and do exactly what they, you know, what Dave has invited us to do, which is figure it out. And let me just mention one thing, which is as we're doing this, I hope we consider light pollution, which means that the lights we put in. Go down, but not necessarily up in a way. Anybody who want to have any comments, or should we just have the staff keep going?
Trustee Mulvaney here, absolutely light pollution. I wouldn't say that we would, we hope that they consider it, but we absolutely need to have. Consideration of light pollution. We should not be lighting people's personal private property with our streetlights, because the light needs to stay in the right of way. If we're going to make any investments in our, in our streetlights. Also, at some point, it should be good to understand. As we swap out different head fixtures on these light, light posts, the posts are quite stationary. But the technology in the light is changing and understanding the proper frequency of poles. Considering the new technology or the type of head fixture that we would be putting on these posts. So light pollution to me though, number one, we need to know about it.
Thank you, helpful. You know, I, I assume Dave and our staff will be figuring and should be figuring that out. Okay, is, if there isn't anything else, is there any other business? I don't hear any. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Village manager Crowley, could you do a roll call?
Rusty Hallwax.
Yes.
Rusty listener.
Yes.
Rusty Mulvaney. Trustee Underdunk. You can nod your head. Okay, trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Bree.
Yes.
The motion carries, we're adjourned. We're still being filmed. Our meeting is supposed to have already started. And I'll ask either the village manager or village attorney. Can we take a short break?
You certainly can.
What, so what should we say? I mean, we should, we could just keep the.
I think we'll just, we'll just keep it rolling and if, if we want to take, what do you think, five minutes, ten minutes? Just to make sure everybody's back.
What do you, what do you think? You want five, ten?
Five.
Okay, we're going to take five minutes. We're going to be back at seven oh seven. So, and we'll start our meeting. Thanks, thanks, everybody. Jordan, I don't know if you can hear. But.
I can.
I'm, I'm, I'm willing to. Right on the button, start reading the boilerplate.
Certainly, that, that's up to you, village president. We're just, we can start anytime after si- or seven, sorry, seven o'clock.
I mean, well, we.
You can start it.
I said seven oh seven, i- is it kosher to start reading the spoiler plate stuff before seven oh seven, or should we wait till then?
It's, it's all right to do so because it's, you're not calling the meeting to order.
Okay, all right. Here I go. Pursuant to adopted amendments to the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Included in Public Act one oh one dash zero six four zero, public bodies may in certain circumstances hold entirely virtual public meetings. Without a quorum physically present in any one location. Governor Prisker's executive order twenty twenty two dash oh one has extended this provision through February sixth, twenty twenty two. Given the state of the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic, as village president, I've made the determination that it is not practical nor prudent to meet in person at this time. Accordingly, this meeting of the village board is being conducted virtually with members of the board and staff participating through the Zoom webinar platform. Village manager Phil Corrali is present in the village hall council chambers in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. So we are up to item one, but let's wait till we're sure everybody's here. And Jordan, just, just tell me and then I'll. Start, let's wait.
We'll let you know.
Okay.
Howard, if, if you want to, you could probably call the meeting to order. You have a quorum. It looks like you have a quorum, which will determine with the roll call.
Okay.
We're just waiting on trustee Mulvaney to return.
Okay, and, and we'll get through the boilerplate and then I'm sure I'll be back. Okay, item one is a. Called order and a roll call, village manager Crowley, could you call the roll, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee listener.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdunk. Trustee Ruben. Trustee Bree.
Here.
Yeah, that's great, okay. As noted, today's board meeting is being conducted as a virtual meeting via Zoom webinar software, and is being audio recorded and simulcast on the village's Facebook page. A quorum of members of the board are present via remote access. As required by law, I'll ask for a roll call rather than a voice vote on any agenda item requiring a vote. Uh, the next item on our agenda is consideration of minutes, and I'd ask for, the minutes have been circulated. Um, and I'll ask for, if, if there aren't any questions or changes, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes for the December sixteenth, twenty twenty one Board of Trustees Regular Meeting.
Don't move.
Second. Okay, there's a motion in the second, uh, village manager Crowley, could you do a roll call?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Bree.
Yes.
Motion carries, the next item on the agenda is public comment. In accordance with the supplemental rule the board approved on April sixteenth, twenty twenty, here's how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with the meeting agenda. At this time, I'd ask that Jordan Rogalski read the public comments received on non-agenda items that were submitted prior to meeting. Public comments on agenda items, if any, will be read when we reach that item on the agenda, Jordan.
President Rowan, we received one comment tonight on an, on non-agenda items. And this comment is from resident Bob Goldberg, who lives at two three six Mortimer Road. And Bob's comment is as follows. I would like to thank the village board and Glencoe staff for their reconsideration of the decision not to clear our village sidewalks. Our recent snowfall resulted in our sidewalks being cleared in a prompt and efficient manner. The new equipment appears to be an excellent investment. In an era of budget and benefit cuts, it is reassuring to see the clearing of sidewalks returned. Thank you for listening, and that was Bob's comment.
Uh, thank you, um, I think this decision was made before I was on the board, so I congratulate the folks that were on the board for making our residents happy. Um, comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting and written comments should be limited to four hundred words. If a member of the public would like to submit a comment, uh, submitted to Glencoe meeting at villageofglencoe.org. Okay, the next item on the agenda is report of committees. The first committee is the Committee of the Whole. Um, we just finished that meeting, it was uh, um, two hours of discussion, we talked about first the Historic Preservation Commission's recommendations to address teardowns uh, of historic landmarks. The second item was a discussion of um, the possibility of having hens uh, in backyards. Uh, the third item we discussed was uh, what to do about presumed lot lines with through lots where development is prohibited in places where the uh, the backyard um, is technically designated as a front yard. And then the fight, the uh, final item we discussed was um, what to do about residential lighting. And the village board uh, directed that the staff go back with respect to each of these issues to pursue them. The next item for report is the Finance Committee and trustee Bree, would you like to report on that?
Thank you, um, so we had our meeting on Tuesday, um, and went through a normal course of business where we reviewed the village finances um, for the full year, so twenty twenty one was a very good year, uh, financially for the village, um, the village ends the year in very good shape. Um, when we look at the areas of revenue for the village, um, the local economy is doing really well. Um, building permits were ahead of budget. Sales tax was ahead of budget, places for eating tax was ahead of budget. And income taxes were ahead of budget, um, all pointing to a very strong local economy. Um, so that's great news, considering where we came from in twenty twenty. Um, on the expense side, it came in line with budget, so um, as I mentioned, the village is in very good shape for the year. Um, we also went through our community investment program, um, looking at the full year of projects that are coming. Um, and then finally, we discussed a donation policy for donations received by the village. Um, and the, really, it centered around um, giving the, the Finance Committee um, time to review donations before they're accepted um, and make sure that they fit within uh, our ethics ordinance, as well as making sure that we're comfortable who is giving these donations and why they're giving them. And that was our meeting.
Uh, thank you for that report, and obviously, it's it's good news that we're in good financial shape, because as a result of the budget we passed, there's a lot of stuff we're planning on doing next year for the betterment of the village. The next report is the Plan Commission, trustee listener, is there a report on the Plan Commission?
There actually isn't a report, um, we did not meet last month, and we're actually not meeting again this month. But uh, I know we, we have a lot on the horizon uh, come spring, but, but right now, there have been no meetings.
Great, thank you, and you do indeed have a lot on the horizon, okay. The next uh, item is the Golf Advisory Committee, trustee Hallwax.
Thank you, we met on Monday, and December actually did have some golf, remember early, it was a little bit uh, warm. So we had three hundred and eighty-three rounds in December, so now we end the year with a new record at forty one thousand one hundred and ten. So um, it's, it's again, kind of in line with trustee Bree in terms of good news. We had net operating income of five hundred and ninety-two thousand, which includes two hundred and eighty-nine thousand in capital improvement. So again, that was a record for the golf course. Um, we are actively looking for hourly seasonal staff through different job posting programs. We had a pretty decent discussion around staffing issues, which I, I know that everybody has, and certainly um, something that we're very conscious of in what we're going to do to both the track workers, and I had suggested we may have to revisit um, pricing next year as well. Uh, with regards to friends with the Glencoe Golf Course, it, there now there is a, a dedicated page for donations called glencoefriends.org. Uh, we're working on a, an article for the Glencoe Compass, which would feature the Glencoe Clubhouse Project, so staff is working on that. And the Glencoe Friends balance is currently right now two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So with there being no golf in the next, assuming a few months, um, focus will be around both staffing, as I mentioned earlier, and around fundraising for the, for the friends of the Glencoe Golf Course.
Thank you for that report. Uh, the next report is the Council for Inclusion and Community, and I'll ask trustee Ruben to report on that.
Actually, sustain- sustainability is not.
I've, uh, you know, so let's do, since I, since I jumped ahead, let's do the Council for Inclusion and Community, and we'll go back.
Okay, uh, it'll be brief, there, because there was no meeting in January, uh, we are meeting uh, in about a week and a half, on the second of February will be our next meeting. And uh, of course, we will be up to full strength again, uh, because of of things that are on the agenda uh, for a little bit later in this meeting, in terms of appointments. And I do wanna make a particular note, again, I hope everyone will join us, February eighth, six P M. We have our next town, town hall. Uh, there'll be a Zoom format, and um, it focuses on being differently abled and the sorts of barriers uh, that one can encounter right here in town. Uh, and increasing folks' awareness to, to what it means to those folks and, and what we might do about. I think it'll be an excellent presentation. Uh, it's three people will be speaking and, uh, as well as a moderate.
Thanks very much, okay, uh, we've determined that I can't read. The next item is the Sustainability Task Force, trustee Mulvaney.
Yes, hello, the um, Glencoe Sustainability Task Force has been hard at work. I'm not skipping months and charging ahead. Uh, we will be meeting again Tuesday next week, and all are welcome. I had wonder, just quickly respond, you know, the, the forums at the, that the um, sorry, I forget the, the proper name, but the old Inclusion and Diversity Task Force is having on differently abled. We used to do some culture of caring moments, some of which included comments like how to care for the heart of hearing, et cetera. Uh, and just another little tickler, I know we stopped doing them, but it's very consistent with what you're trying to achieve there. Um, so, uh, but back to the, the Sustainability Task Force. Uh, yes, we, what I wanna do is simply mention that we are working on a annual report that you guys will see. There are different categories there, carbon reduction, green lawns, ravines and tree canopy, recycling and waste reduction, sustainable businesses, water use, protection and conservation, and public awareness, those are the categories which we have been working on essentially since we were founded a few years back. Uh, and we'll be preparing a, a summary report for, for the board in the near future. Uh, actually, it's, it's in draft form now. And our, um, you know, something to also mention, we, we held a library talk, hosted a library talk a week or so ago, I hope some of you were able to attend. Uh, sort of sobering news around uh, the climate and the changes in our climate. Uh, however, we did apparently stimulate one person to join our task force as a result of that um, of that presentation, and we have another one, a plan for the near future that's gonna focus on energy, electricity, and and the trend with electric vehicles, uh, should be quite interesting. And that's the report, we look forward to seeing everybody at our next meeting, uh, Tuesday next week, thank you.
Thanks very much, uh, for the report on, uh, important work. Uh, the next item is the Historic Preservation Commission, and possibly soon to be called the Preservation Commission, uh, trustee Underdunk.
Thank you very much. Um, of course, the Historic Preservation Commission uh, has had now three meetings with the village board. The most recent one was prior to this meeting, where we discussed some potential amendments to the um, Historic Preservation Ordinance and policies and procedures. Um, that presentation was broken into a couple different parts, several different parts. Uh, one related to ordinance modifications. Uh, another section talked about policy and process recommendations, and then there's some items for further discussion. Uh, we had a spirited discussion, uh, and um, I think there was a consensus that there's more that needs to be done. Uh, I think there are almost twenty recommendations coming out of the committee. Uh, some of them, I think, are some things that can advance fairly quickly, others need uh, more attention. Uh, again, the reason why we're doing this is that we've lost a number of homes recently, and we're trying to preserve our architectural and cultural heritage in the community. Uh, so we look forward to uh, our next chance to meet with the board uh, to clarify some of the issues in our three big uh, areas, and uh, look forward to working with the board on that matter.
Uh, thank trustee Underdunk, thanks very much. Uh, that concludes the, those reports, the next item of agenda is report of officers, and first, the village managers' report.
Thank you, President Rowan, good evening, everyone, uh, I've got a few items this evening that I wanted to provide a, a quick update on. Uh, the first uh, relates to the quarterly performance indicator report that uh, is in tonight's uh, packet. Every quarter, staff provides a synopsis of data from both our public safety and public works departments. Um, this month's report aggregates data from the entire twenty twenty one calendar year. Uh, it starts on page sixteen of uh, tonight's packet. One point of interest that I wanted to highlight uh, is outlined on page eighteen, and that's the significant increase in reports of theft. Um, this term, I think, can be somewhat misleading, and so I've asked Public Safety Director Lewandowski to briefly outline that point. Uh, so chief, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up that um, screenshot so that everybody can see it and ask for you to just outline that, if you could.
Okay, uh, good evening, everyone, um, thanks, Phil. If you look at the bar graphs on the right side with the data, it looks like there was a big jump between twenty twenty and twenty twenty one for the category of theft. In fact, it makes up ninety-eight percent of our, of our major crimes um, for calendar year twenty twenty one. I wanna bring you back to something I mentioned probably in early twenty twenty one about unemployment insurance fraud, which was running rampant throughout the state of Illinois, and Glencoe was no different. Um, toward the end of twenty twenty, and the first few months of twenty twenty one, we were getting ten to fifteen cases a week. And I would imagine that there was many other victims who didn't even report it to us. The, the, the silver lining to that is at the, if you, if you look at the trends, after about April, all those things fell off, and the good news is that the Illinois Department of Employment Security tightened up their portal for people to apply for unemployment insurance, so that helped screen out a lot of the fraud as someone was trying to re- uh, report it and request it, rather than letting them request it, the application going through, and then notified employers, so the good news is while we had a lot of those incidents accounting for a lot of our activity, it did fall off because the I D E S did a much better job of tightening up their portal, so that crime has pretty much went away, so I am expecting that in twenty twenty two, our numbers are good back to normal rates as compared to our three-year comparisons here. Any questions or any other thoughts on that?
Uh, thanks, thanks very much for a clear report.
Okay.
Uh, I, I assume I was not alone, I got a notice from I D E S that my application for unemployment insurance was denied.
And I did as well.
Made one, and since they decided anyway, I didn't report it.
Hmm, yeah.
Except to them, I told, I, I told I D E.
Thanks, chief, I appreciate that. Um, I wanted to give a, a quick update on uh, COVID nineteen and the pandemic that continues. Since we met last month, I think we've really um, been a little bit in awe of the significant increase in the total number of cases of COVID nineteen in both our, in our organization in the village, and then, of course, in the region and across the country. Uh, a lot of that um, uh, related to the Omicron variant, the newest of the, of the various COVID variants. Thankfully, the news that uh, is coming out this week, especially regionally, seems to point that uh, point to uh, a crest in the cases and that uh, things may be uh, getting better. Um, but we certainly remain in what the county has deemed a high community transmission level, and so there are still uh, significant risks out there. Um, as the village has since the beginning of the pandemic, we continue to urge residents and businesses to ensure both um, uh, masking protocols, distance protocols, and of course, vaccination whenever possible. Uh, I wanted to just mention village operations related to this latest surge. Um, thankfully, our operations haven't been unduly impacted. Um, as of this evening, we've got um, three employees across the organization who are out. Um, at, at our high level, we had twelve out at the same time, um, which is just a little bit more than ten percent of our workforce. Uh, we've been able to keep all village operations functional throughout, all of our buildings have stayed open to the public. That hasn't been true of some other communities uh, around us, and so I'm grateful for that. We did impose several um, additional mitigations uh, that our staff have been very compliant with, and that includes additional masking requirements when they're in the buildings, um, and uh, I'm, again, as I said, I'm grateful that they've complied with that. I'm also grateful that we have a very high level of vaccination among our, among our workforce. Um, county mitigations have ramped up uh, in January. This now includes a proof of vaccination requirement uh, for many businesses, uh, particularly restaurants. Um, that does apply to the village of Glencoe, as well as all of our neighboring communities. Um, we certainly appreciate the cooperation of our business community and those who are patronizing our businesses uh, for complying with the county's requirements, we have not heard of any complaints. Um, just as a reminder, if complaints do come in, those are um, forwarded to the Cook County Department of Public Health for follow-up. And as I said, we have not seen any complaints come in, uh, that our businesses aren't complying with that. Uh, just a, a couple of um, public service announce- announcements. District thirty five. District 35 has been hosting walk-in PCR testing clinics at Meisner Auditorium throughout the month of January. There are several that are still coming up next week and possibly the following week as well. That information is on the district's website. But it's really a very quick and easy testing process. It's walk-in, no appointment necessary. And several village employees have availed themselves of going in for those tests when they've been difficult to get elsewhere. They're turning around results in 24 hours. It's really a great service that District 35 has provided. In addition to that, next Thursday, January 27th, District 35's hosting along with other Nutria Township districts, a vaccine booster clinic also at Meisner Auditorium. It's for anybody over the age of 12. Appointments are necessary. We'll push out the information from District 35 relative to signing up for those appointments. But there's been a lot of interest in booster clinics. Nutria hosted one about a week and a half ago and about 1,500 booster doses were given out at that, at that event alone. So lots happening. We're continuing to push information out to our community through our online and e-news portals, all of our social media. And we hope we're, we're getting the information where it needs to go. And just continue to urge people to be cautious and careful as we hopefully make our way through this current surge and hopefully out of, out of pandemic issues altogether, but one, one step at a time. I wanted to make mention of a couple of projects that are on the horizon that have had, have been on our books for a while that we're going to be moving forward with in 2022. And the first relates to a, an improvement on the Green Bay Trail at the Hazel Crossing. If you'll indulge me for a second, I'm going to try to share my screen again. Technology is fun. There we go. And if there are specific questions that you have, as I, as I go through this, Dave Mau will back me up, thankfully. As I mentioned, one of a number of capital improvements that we're looking at for 2022 is the long-planned investment in the Green Bay Trail Crossing at Hazel Avenue. We're expecting this project's going to kick off this spring and it's funded. 80% of this project is funded with federal resources, the remainder coming from local sources here from Glencoe. It improves the safety of this crossing for bicyclists and pedestrians by slightly narrowing Hazel Avenue, significantly improving signage and street markings, reducing the steepness of the grade, widening the path itself, and providing a better, more clearly delineated path that will connect to the Park District's recently completed linear trail along Old Green Bay Road north of Park Avenue. So while it doesn't fully extend in this, in this picture, all the way to Park, this improvement will connect to the Park District's, the Park District's recently completed paths. Work's going to begin, as I mentioned, later this spring. It's probably going to be about a three-month construction process. There will be detours in place once that construction kicks off, but we are looking forward to this. The, this is a result of a, of a engineering study that we did back in 2016 that explored the possibility of an overpass, a bicycle overpass in this location. Physical limitations led us at that time to go a different path, physical limitations being space needs, the size and scale of the, of the overpass bridge, the traffic counts on Hazel Avenue and the overall cost of the project, which was, which was approaching five-plus million dollars with all of the improvements that were necessary. This project's about $350,000 or so, and again, 80% of which is coming from federal resources. So we're excited about that. Another project that's been a long time coming is the State of Illinois Safe Routes to School grant-funded improvements around all three of our schools here in Glencoe. This was the result of the Active Transportation Plan, which was a joint project between the Village Park District and District 35 back in 2018. It was an initiative of the Sustainability Task Force. And it spotlighted several deficiencies in our pedestrian network, all of which we continue to work to improve. This about $130,000 project, again, fully state-funded, is going to provide new rapid flashing beacons in several crosswalk locations, a variety of crosswalk enhancements around our schools, sidewalk connections and other infrastructure improvements, particularly in the intersection of Dundee Road and Forestway Drive, all to help make children's paths safer to school throughout Glencoe. As I mentioned already, the, the Active Transportation Plan really has advised both of these projects and will continue to utilize that plan as we improve our sidewalk network. One of the components of the referendum that was approved last April is a significant investment of over $800,000 in our sidewalk network. And we are actively seeking additional resources through CMAP and others for trail improvements, sidewalk improvements to supplement those resources that we have at hand. So I wanted to make mention of those. There has been some question about when those projects are going to kick off. Again, the, the Safe Routes to School project, I should have mentioned, that'll be later this summer. While the Hazel Crossing will be probably April, May kickoff. Trustee Rubin mentioned the virtual town hall for the Council for Inclusion and Community. So I won't repeat that other than to say all of the information for that event is available on the village's website. We are asking people to pre-register. It's, it's free, of course, but because it's on Zoom, trying information out. So please visit the village's website and join the council on February 8th, starting at 6:00 PM. Last but not least, I wanted to just make mention, something that we've been talking about for the last several months, relates to the work that our region is going to undertake on our leaf blower regulatory structures. And this, again, a, a initiative of the Sustainability Task Force that has grown legs and gathered a lot of interest from our neighboring communities. We are working with 10 other municipalities as well as other subject matter experts. Myself and my colleagues from Highland Park and Womack will be co-chairing this working group of about 35 that kicks off its work on January 31st. You will see some reports back to you during the work that this group is going to undertake. And our hope is to complete all of that work by this fall. I'm joined on the, on the working group by Hall Healy from the Sustainability Task Force. And again, it's a, a very dynamic, diverse group of community representatives and subject matter experts, looking forward to this project kicking off. And special thanks to the Sustainability Task Force for really, I think, garnering the, the interest in our region in talking about this and doing so together as opposed to one at a time. I think it's a really great way for governments to be working together on an issue that all of us are, are impacted by. With that, that's the end of my report. I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Are there any questions for the village manager on his excellent report? I don't see any. Thank you, Phil. The next item on the agenda is the Village President's Report. And this report is primarily about the Council for Inclusion and Community. Trustee Rubin, Assistant Village Manager Tanner and I recently interviewed candidates for vacancies on the council. And we also interviewed folks for the, to be the new Chair, Co-Chairs of the council. Let me say, I continue to be extremely impressed and grateful at the high quality of folks who volunteer to help our village. We have three superb new additions to the council. Sakura Evans, I hope I haven't butchered her name, but I might have. Is one Reverend Kirk, who is the new pastor for the St. Paul AME Church, and Emily Robbins. All three of them are terrific additions to the council. And so Trustee Rubin, Assistant Village Manager Tanner and I warmly proposed them, and I would request a motion to approve these appointments to the Council for Inclusion and Community.
So moved.
Okay.
Joyously.
Okay.
Equally joyous, second.
That's great. Could we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Joy, joy.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vry.
Yes.
The motion carries, and you know, so we are, like I said, we are lucky to have them. They'll be great additions. In addition, the, the, the group of us also, we, Difty Clark did a terrific job as head of what is now called the Council for Inclusion and Community. She recently stepped down after superb service, and so we had a vacancy. And after interviewing some excellent candidates, we're going to recommend that we have co-chairs. And the co-chairs are two current members of the council, Hillary Scott and Raphael Guzman. They will be terrific co-chairs and a terrific team. Because we didn't finish the process until the notice time had elapsed, what we're going to do is they're sort of the co-chair designates, and they'll be put on the agenda for February's meeting. But we, we wanted to announce our intention to choose them now and so they can, you know, hit the ground running. But again, very enthusiastic about them and their willingness to serve the village. Gary, you want to say anything? You know, don't have to, but.
No, I too am very excited about the new folks that'll be joining council. And I, I think that both Hillary and Raphael have really shown that the two of them have an excellent set of skills and drive to, to drive our council forward in the work that it still needs to do. And so I'm looking, I'm looking forward to working with them. I think it's, it'll be a great team.
Okay, so that, that concludes the Village President's Report. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. And because this is a virtual meeting, I'll ask Village Manager Crowley to read the titles of all the items on the Consent Agenda, which, you know, have been presented in, you know, published in public. They're on the website. And we've all looked at them. Phil, you want to go through that list?
Certainly, President Rowan. First item, Item 6A is the December 2021 Village Treasures Report and Golf Financial Report. Item 6B, the December 2021 Check Register for the Village of Glencoe and Glencoe Golf Club. 6C, Radification of the December 2021 Early Check Register List. 6D, Consideration of Resolution Authorizing Payment of the 2022 Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency Contribution in the Amount of $324,095. Item 6E, Consideration of a Resolution for the Maintenance of Village Streets in Calendar Year 2022 Using Motor Fuel Tax Funds. Item 6F, Consideration of an Ordinance to Authorize the Disposal of Surplus Vehicles and Equipment Owned by the Village of Glencoe. Item 6G, Consideration of an Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of Two 2022 Ford Utility Police Interceptor Vehicles for the Public Safety Department and Declaring Two 2018 Ford Interceptor Utility Vehicles as Surplus. And finally, Item 6H, Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing the Village Manager to Execute an Engineering Services Agreement for the 2022 Water Main Replacement Improvements.
Thank you. If there aren't any questions about these items, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? I think we got a motion and that's great. Okay, Village Manager Crowley, could you do a roll call?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vry.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is regular business, but there aren't any items for consideration for regular business. So the next item is other business. Is there any business that any member would like to discuss that wasn't on their regular agenda? Not hearing anything. Jordan, is there, and are there any public comments that were submitted during the meeting?
We did not receive any.
Okay. Initially, there was an indication there might be a closed session, but in fact, there isn't. So if there aren't any other comments, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, there is. Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vry.
Yes.
The motion carries. We're adjourned. It's cold outside. Stay warm. There's a rumor it might be warming up in a week or so.